Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting on September 11th, 2017. Before we begin, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. I've always thought it's best to look at the positive side. Sixteen years ago, this country was challenged, and I think that the most important thing we can do is continue to stay together as a country. Recently, two very large hurricanes have displaced tens of thousands of people in our country, and I'm sure we'll come together from that. So I can have a few moments to think about the people who died in 9/11 and those who were affected by the recent storms. I'd like to first start with some announcements of upcoming meetings. On Monday, September 25th, our next meeting here at 7:00 in the council chambers, we'll have a public hearing regarding the Bellingham Police Department's grant application to the Department of Justice for software that would automate the tagging of the body-worn camera videos. Would you please now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Liliquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Borneman.
Here.
And April Barker is excused.
April Barker is excused. She's unfortunately at home and not feeling well. We will begin as usual with our scheduled public hearing. After the public hearing, we'll go on to our public comment period. This is a public hearing on proposed relinquishment of a utility easement on the vacated 40th Street and Consolidation Avenue areas of town that is considered surplus to the city needs. We'll have a presentation, and then we'll open up the public hearing. Ted, are you going to begin with that presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. As council is aware, we've gone through a number of these in recent months, situations where previously the city via ordinance has vacated a portion of city-owned right-of-way and at the time of vacation retained utility easements on behalf of the city in the case in the future the city needed to use that vacated right-of-way for water, sewer, or other underground utilities. Over time, the city has built up the area using existing rights-of-way and has not needed that easement to serve the area. An adjacent property owner has made a request to the city to relinquish the utility easement that the city retained because they need that area to make their development move forward. City goes through a process to look at easements, just like we do with all city-owned process, go through an analysis with Parks Department, the Public Works Department, community development and planning to determine whether or not the easement is in fact surplus to the city's needs. In this case, we've looked at it. The city does not need that easement for water or sewer. The applicant is working with other utility providers, including Puget Town Energy, who they've taken care of, but there is still an issue pending with Comcast. There is some Comcast infrastructure within that easement that will need to be either relocated or more likely Comcast will negotiate a specific smaller in width easement with the applicant, perhaps in a different area, but in a way that makes the applicant's development move forward. So in the city's determination that it is surplus to our needs and conditioned on an agreement with Comcast and the applicant, staff would recommend that council pass a resolution relinquishing the easement. The city's code and state law requires that a public hearing be held, so that's what we're doing tonight. I've put an area map on the overhead for to get everyone oriented to where we're at. We're talking about the area over by the Western Washington University parking ride off of Lincoln Street. Here's Lincoln Street. Here is 40th Street, which is the vacated right-of-way. And Consolidation over here, there's actually two easements within the council's packet that would need to be relinquished. It has to do with how it was done originally, but in essence, it's the area in yellow here that would be relinquished, and staff would recommend, again, that that would be conditioned on the applicant negotiating an easement or something that is satisfactory to Comcast. I provided Council President Liliquist with some modified language because that's actually not in your packet. This was something that came forward at the very end after the packets were printed. We thought that the Comcast issue was dealt with, and it actually has not been dealt with yet, so we'd like to amend the resolution in the packet to condition the mayor's execution of this based on a satisfactory resolution with Comcast. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would request that the council open up the public hearing.
Council members, any questions? Terry.
Is there a monetary value to the easement?
Good question. When we've done these utility easement relinquishments, there has not been any money exchanged. The basis for that is when the city gets the easements originally, we don't pay for them, so when we relinquish them, we don't ask for any compensation in return. And that has been consistent. We do go through that analysis, but that has been consistently how we've dealt with these.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Terry, could you go see if someone has signed up? And I'd also like to say, usually we have three projections up in the council chamber. Unfortunately, we're having a malfunction. You've got to crane your neck over there. Apologize. We'll have that fixed as soon as we can. Okay, no one appears to have signed up to speak this issue. If anyone would like to come forward, you certainly may. Come forward to the microphone, just state your name and give us whatever feedback you have on the issue of this utility easement. Just come forward if you'd like. Up here is easier.
So I did like the question that he had regarding the monetary issue, or if there's any compensation for this. And I understand what you were talking about in terms of the city when they get the easement. However, in these times and in these development times where things are difficult to develop, it would seem that that does in fact have some monetary value and that perhaps that should be given some consideration and maybe a change to address what is known now.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, excuse me. Sue Toy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Jean.
I'd like to move approval of the amended version of the resolution.
Second.
We have motion before us to approve the amended resolution, and I believe the language now would state the mayor is authorized to execute all documents necessary to relinquish the relinquishment area as defined herein in the new language is upon confirming that Comcast, who currently has infrastructure in the relinquishment area, has no objections to relinquishment. So that'd be the modified language. So any further discussion on this issue?
I guess I'd sort of like to respond to the one comment we did receive. Our job as the city is not to make money or to stop development, but to promote beneficial development. And in this case, if there's no public need by keeping the utility, but there is a public benefit by facilitating development, I'm okay with our current policy, but I do appreciate the feedback.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's six zero with one excused absence. Thank you very much. We'll now go on to our 15-minute public comment period. So this is 15 minutes we set aside to give people who signed up three minutes each to speak to the council as a whole, to give us feedback and anything that's on your mind. This is our time to listen. It's not a conversation in the sense that if you ask us a question, we'll treat it as rhetorical, we'll take notes, we'll consider your words, but we're not going to be responding at this time on those topics. I will go ahead and call the first few people, and you just come over here and speak and line up in order. Wes Gannaway will be the first speaker, followed by Colter Rose and then Sue Toy again.
Good evening. I'm Wes Gannaway. I'm here representing the Wachem County Historical Society, of which I am president. This is on the Pickett name. I understand you've already had some discussions about it, but I have points of interest that are historical items. Captain George Pickett came here in the late summer of 1856 to build a fort to protect us from the raiders from the north, mainly the Queen Charlotte Islands. He performed this function while he was here. He built Fort Bellingham, which is, well, I think everybody probably knows where it is, about three miles west of here. He built his section of the military road, which extended from his fort down through Wachem and across over to Seehom, which at that time was an independent city or town. I get more like a village. So then he went to build the bridge across the creek, and of course, he built that. That bridge sat there for about, what, 50 years? It was replaced once, probably around the 1880s, and then it was replaced again in 1920 with the current bridge. That bridge was dedicated, and it was, the plaque, of course, had his name on it, was dedicated in his name as the Pickett Bridge. So there's a gentleman, I'm gonna make this short. He was a dedicated United States officer at the time of the construction. He served our community. He bought supplies for the fort from Wachem, which was a village at the time, probably 50 people or less. There were no other activities here except for a hotel and, of course, the courthouse building, which was, well, no, I'm sorry, it was built two years later. He had his men spent money here, and of course, then he hired the locals to help construct the road and the bridge. He protected us from raids by the Northern Indians, and at the same time, the Indians, natives on the east side were also active, and so they didn't come up here. Prior to his arriving, we did have people who were killed by the Northern Indians in this area, so he did his job. He was probably the main benefactor to the town, the village of Wachem. If he hadn't been here, it might have just gone out of existence. There was no other reason for it to be here. The mill did not do well, the sawmill, that was the only other activity here. The coal mine in Seehom was the only going concern. When he went back to the east, he did so as a citizen of Virginia.
Time.
Thank you. Three minutes. The next person is Colter Rowe, followed by Sue Toy, and then Caroline Bennig.
Good evening. My name is Colter Rowe, and I thank the city council bringing up the issue of DACA at this time. As we know, the Trump administration has been thinking of removing DACA. And for me, and what I've seen, that would be a bad decision to remove DACA. I went to a high school that had a lot of immigrant students from immigrant families who came in from Mexico, as well as others Latino countries, and a lot of them succeeded in an incredible manner that I'd never inspected. And I hope they go on to have very successful careers, whether it's welding, being a nurse, a veterinarian, or whatever they hope to do. And with DACA, that can help keep the families together, but if it's gone, you're gonna have families gonna be torn apart, they're gonna be broken, they're gonna just be heartbroken, you're never, and then the people who are taken away show no remorse. How would you feel if you were taken from your family and sent to a place full of crime and shootings and murders? Would you feel like that was a good decision to have it removed? And would you feel like if you had to take children away from people's families, would you feel like that was a good choice to ruin families? So I would definitely recommend supporting DACA and making sure that it stays, and also recommend making Bellingham a sanctuary city for everyone, so that we can understand that we all, this understands that the council and that city of Bellingham cares for all people, not just a group of people. As it says in the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal." Not one group of men, but all men, which in these days means everyone. So this cannot, it cannot be religiously moved forward by religion, and it needs to be from you guys. We need to make sure DACA stands in an unbiased manner to make sure that everyone can be supported by this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sue Toy is next, followed by, oh, one of our other rules is no booing, but also no applause. So you can appreciate the speaker's comments quietly. And we do this so that no one feels either inhibited from speaking their own opinion, which may or may not be the same as yours. I'm sorry, Sue. Go ahead and come forward. Carolyn Bennig will be next, then followed by Yoshi Revell.
Hello. I'm Sue Toy, and I'm speaking in support of homes now. I know that we all have the similar goal in terms of hopefully finding a solution for people that are experiencing homelessness, and there have been many great ideas that have come up. I read a little bit about the Western Washington study that suggested that small homes be built on 600 to 1,000 square foot lots. So when I read that, and then I read the comment from, I believe it was the Planning Department, they said, well, that, I think it was the Planning Department, they said that that might, that there isn't really an avenue for that right now. So that led me to think that perhaps what that sounds like is home ownership rather than shelter. So the goals that I think that we have are just are sheltering the homeless people, so that the people that are experiencing homelessness, so that they can have some degree of stability to start on their path towards better things. So in reviewing the Western Washington study, it didn't seem like that would be a, that is not perhaps the best solution. The other, the other thing I read about was Mayor Linville would like to see some sort of a program or a structure or a setting for serving up to 200 people. And I find that that is very well-intended, and there's lots of heart in there, but in the meantime, what we have is a situation where no one, they're not, the people are still without shelter, and they're in camps. So as I would like to ask, perhaps taking a broader view and looking at this as a multi-phase solution, not just going and taking the big bite and saying, we're gonna do all of this all at once, but perhaps taking a multi-phase level where at each step, though, you're helping along the way, and it's incremental. So I'm speaking in support of homes now. I believe that the tiny shelters, and I'm not calling them houses because that's, again, a different connotation, this is, these are shelters, which allow the folks private space as well as community space.
You have 30 more seconds.
Thank you. And so what I would envision is perhaps these tiny shelters that don't have any bathroom facilities or cooking facilities, but a community area for that sort of thing, so that there's community when community is wanted and privacy when privacy is wanted. And then the second phase would be perhaps adding lockers so that the people that are not yet sheltered at least have a place to put their belongings, so they can at least feel safe in that manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn is next, followed by Yoshi Revell, and then Gretchen Anderson.
Hi. I'm motivated by concern for the homeless, but I want to share, just kind of float, an idea that came across my attention just recently, and it's a program that was piloted in other communities and was successful. And the thought that I have is along the lines of something that's gonna hand some self-empowerment to the homeless. This has to do with a mayor that implemented a program in 2015, and it was called the Better Way Program, and what they did is they hired people on a daily basis. They paid them $9 an hour, provided lunch, and at the end of the shift, they offered them overnight shelter, and in less than a year, they gave out 932 jobs, and they managed to clear 70,000 pounds of litter from their city. And I think of that phrase, you know, it's not about giving a handout, but a hand up. And, you know, they say it's better to give than receive, and oftentimes, it's very demoralizing when they find themselves always on the side of just receiving. So when we provide them with an opportunity where they can give out something, when they are then able to receive something that empowers them, I think that restores their self-esteem and a sense of their dignity. Most have been very eager, they said, to follow through with receiving work, and they expanded the funding, and they started a day labor program where not only city was hiring, but they connected employers in the area to offer side jobs, and they picked up people with a van to bring them to the place where they would work. It provided these people with a support system. It was life-changing for them. It was proactively tackling homelessness, connected people to services they otherwise would not get, and the really excellent thing was showing them that at a time when they were at their lowest, that they actually had value. It helped hundreds of people, and they said it made the city more beautiful than ever. So I'd like to just present that thought to be considered. It was a program that was piloted in Albuquerque, so.
Thank you. Yoshi is next, followed by Gretchen Anderson, and then Anila Folsom.
Thank you, members of the audience and staff, city council, Madam Mayor. My name is Yoshi Revell. Before I speak on what I came to speak about, it was interesting today that Pope Francis came out in strong support of DACA and said it's actually pro-life to support DACA, and I found that interesting. What I came to speak about was what's called the primary or true economy versus the secondary or false economy. The primary or true economy is essentially nature. Nature provides our air, our water, actually grows our food. All the resources that we get for our homes and our businesses and anything that we build all comes from nature, and then you add in our labor. So the primary economy, the real economy, is nature's labor and our labor. Then what we have, we have what's called the false economy, the secondary economy of the false economy, and all that is, is basically a swirl of money going around in a circle, doing nothing. We've been taught that that secondary false economy of money swirling around, doing nothing, is part of the real economy. It's not. It's a diversion. It's there because we're afraid. We're afraid to actually trust the primary economy of nature and our own labor and to share with each other. So we reach out and we grab these pieces of paper or these numbers on it, a balance sheet or whatever it is. That false economy is where we get screwed up. And things like climate change happen, things like poverty happen, things like disease happen, because we're chasing something that literally does nothing. Money is false. It's a figment of our imagination. It's an invention. It's there because we're afraid to trust the primary economy. And so what I'm asking is, in your deliberations and our deliberations also, whoever wants to think about this, think about, how do I step out of that false economy of money swirling around that's doing nothing, that's attracting me actually towards death? It attracts me towards disease and death. How do I separate that false economy of swirling money from the primary economy, the real economy of nature and our own legitimate labor? And the more we do that, the more we start looking at the primary economy and saying, oh, my goodness, I was chasing after money, this swirling pile of money, and I was destroying the environment through climate change, or I was destroying my own health chasing after pieces of paper instead of saying, you know, I don't need to chase a piece of paper. There's a real economy over here that functions much better if I harmonize myself with it. So I ask, how do we separate? First of all, think about it. The secondary false economy, money, it does nothing. All it is is a tornado of swirling money that does nothing except destroy us versus the primary economy, nature and our own labors. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Yoshi, can you close the projector drawer, please?
Close? Oh, this?
Yeah. We need to.
Push this down.
It bends.
Does it turn off?
Oh, really? Well, thank you, Yoshi. What's it go on?
Sorry, Yoshi. You're here often enough, I figured you might know how the equipment works.
Mike, would you want to leave it up for the duration of the public comment? Okay. It's up to you. Sure. And then we'll put it down. Gretchen, you're next, then, and I think it's Anila Folsom, and then Patrick Splan, if I'm reading this correctly. Gretchen, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Gretchen Anderson, and I'm here to talk about, well, what precipitated my thoughts was the removal of the signs for the Pickett Bridge and the directional signs to the Pickett House. What we need are some established city guidelines for looking at whether historic structures, signs, and works of art are valuable to our community and its history, so should be kept, or whether they represent honoring people and ideas that are abhorrent in today's culture. Do they cause some of those living in our community and our cultural norms today to be demeaned or thought of as unequal to majority population or thought of in a prejudged way? We shouldn't be responding to protests and requests with knee-jerk or unconsidered reactions each and every time these issues come up, so guidelines would be helpful. We need to be respectful of our personal and communal history and even know its ugly side so that we don't perpetuate and repeat it. Every one of us is a deeply flawed individual, as were the founders of our country. We're a mix of good and bad values and behaviors. Most of us, certainly most people I know, strive to achieve more good, and we struggle to do this throughout our lives by learning and changing our attitudes to fit new knowledge. I'm not the same person now I was at 20 or 40. I hope that I will not be judged by one belief I held, but that I will be judged by my whole person, my efforts and accomplishments, and that will overshadow what might in the future be judged as lacking in compassion or other values. We need to judge those who hold a place in history as whole people and not eliminate evidence that they lived and worked and contributed to our community simply because they did something or held a belief that many of us find unconscionable today. Times change. It's an opportunity to educate, to explain what was previously thought acceptable in another era is now not acceptable and why. Or that an individual did wonderful things but held a perspective on something else that's reprehensible now. I think of Wagner and his anti-Semitism, or Henry Ford for the same reason. How should we be guided in these situations? What are the criteria to which we will refer when the issue repeats itself and again, repeats itself again, pointing out the flaws of historic figure? We need the guidelines to be established sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anila Folsom next, followed by Patrick Splan, and then Rain Forever.
Hi. I do not have my glasses, so I can't see any of you, so I'm just gonna read. My name is Anilia Folsom, and I really wanted to share my story on why I believe we should have ADUs both attached and non-attached, allowing each homeowner to decide. I moved to Bellingham about four years ago. When I first came to Bellingham, I was really excited. I started looking for houses about six months before I planned to move in. Right away, I learned that the realty services in Bellingham are really awful. I was pretty lucky to move I was pretty lucky to move into Cambridge Square, which had an onsite maintenance manager. It was there that I learned that my neighbors have been living there for 19 years because there was a lack of affordable living around the area. They raised their two children in a two-bedroom house. I stayed there for three years, and this last year, I decided that I needed a change and I wanted to move out. And thus, I was presented with the Bellingham housing crisis. I toured 12 houses in seven days and stood in a 50-person line to see one poorly-kept house. I saw basements where people had thrown a couple beds and four people were living because if they didn't, they would find themselves homeless. By the time the second week passed, I was desperate. By the time the third week passed, I was scared. I was afraid I was going to find myself homeless. And I, over a weekend, put in an application, sending my roommate with cash to get the house. And at the same time, someone applied over the phone to get it. We, over the weekend, spent nerves, anxiety, and we ended up getting the house, but I very easily could have found myself homeless, and I need to be here to finish my degree. Sorry. I believe that we should have the ADUs both non-attached and attached because it is an immediate problem which needs to be solved.
Thank you very much. Patrick Splan is next, followed by Rain Forever, and then Jim Peterson.
I'm here to represent Homes Now, I guess. I'm homeless. I'm homeless because my van was impounded when I went to jail for a few days. I got out, my van was impounded, I didn't have any cash, $350. Two weeks later, it's $1,500 to get my van back. There's no reason for me to be homeless, other than $350, that there is no help to receive. I was perfectly stable when I had my van. I was able to provide for myself. I had my roof for my dog. I was able to earn a living. As soon as it was impounded, I lost all that ability. Took everything I own. This happens on a daily basis all around us. People miss a court date, and then suddenly they find themselves homeless. Or they, for whatever reason, their home gets taken from and boarded up for why they're not doing anything illegal out of it, just the city has decided that, oh, something's not up to code, or so they take their home because they didn't mow their lawn enough, or things like that. There's a big problem. Being homeless is not the problem. It's what you see as a result of the problem, which is a lack of care. There's a good ministry, a good, good story that I've heard, I'm gonna share with you all. A man found himself dead, and on his way to heaven, he said, Lord, let's see the difference between heaven and hell before I get there. And so he gets up there, and Buddha's sitting there waiting for him. Buddha, you must be here to show me the difference between heaven and hell. He said, yes, sir. There's two doors. Pick a door. So the gentleman picked a door, and he walked through it. What he seen before him was bliss. It's food everywhere, the biggest bountiful feast you could ever see, anything you could want and imagine to eat. There's no silverware. There's only 11-foot chopsticks. Everybody's miserable, fighting and angry, and cussing at each other, and just, you know, it's rapture, it's no good. So he walks out the door, and he says, well, that must be hell, you know? All this food, but nobody's eating. So let me see heaven. And he goes through the other door, and it's the same thing, only everybody's merry and happy and yeful, and enjoying this bountiful feast that they don't have any silverware to eat. They've only got the same 11-foot chopstick. And so the gentleman, he sees everybody happy, so he figures this must be heaven. Well, he walks out, and he asks Buddha, so Buddha, I see the first one was hell. The second one must be heaven, but what's the difference? He said, child, in hell, everybody's too worried about how they're gonna feed themselves with 11-foot chopsticks. In heaven, we feed each other, because that's what it's about. It's feeding each other with those 11-foot chopsticks, not trying to feed yourselves.
Thank you for that. Next person is Rain Forever, followed by Jim Peterson, and I've got a second page, so Amy Glasser will be next.
Hi, my name is Rain Forever. I have, I printed off some. This is kind of out of nowhere, but I heard about this last week and the last couple days. I just kind of whipped this together. But I thought of an idea for being able to get people somewhat housed and into a community if the land was available some way, which would be a big ordeal probably. But I was thinking if the homeless people could come up with like $100 a month to put their tents up and use bathrooms and stuff like that, then the homeless people could actually purchase the land altogether and be able to pay for land that the city has or somebody has, I guess. Because I know that Homes Now is looking for land as also, and this is a little bit easier situation. I know that there's a lot of homeless people that are good people, that aren't on drugs and aren't crazy, and a lot of people want to stay away from the drop-in center and stay away from the shelter and stuff because they don't want to be around the sort of street lifestyle stuff. And so having a tent community where everybody is vetted in and is a legitimately good person that wants to be involved in the community and stuff, it would just be a better environment for people, and they would have their own home, just like tiny homes, but like a lot cheaper and a lot more immediate. So you guys can look over that. I guess that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Jim Peterson is next, followed by Amy Glasser, and then Doug Gustafson.
My name's Jim Peterson. I'm president of Homes Now, Not Later. I'm here to give you a little personal story about me and why I do Homes Now. I was homeless for 17 years, from 1974 until 1991. And what got me off the streets wasn't drug treatment, wasn't a shelter, wasn't mental health treatment, wasn't jail. It was a lady walking up to me, a homeless person that I didn't think people would talk to, and asking me what would it take? And I said, a place to live. And so she said, great, let's go get a newspaper, because at that time, I was getting general assistance. I had an income, so I could afford a place. She took me and got me a newspaper, told me to look at places I could afford, and then she drove me around and took me to different apartments. The first place I went to, I wanted. It was a studio apartment, something that I could afford. But I was told by the landlord he wouldn't rent to me because I was homeless. And my anger came out, and she had to drag me out of there. And then the next place we went to, I couldn't afford, and the guy didn't want to work with me on deposit. And then the third place, the guy put me in, said, no problem, we'll rent to you. I moved in, and it was four days later when Barbara Stanton came back and asked me, now what's it gonna keep, to keep you here? I said, well, we might want to deal with my heroin addiction, and we might want to deal with my mental health. So she hooked me up with support services. I'm now not homeless since 1991. I've raised three boys. One served in the service, the others two are living on their own, one just got married. I'm a product of a success. And it wasn't being told what I needed, it was being asked what I needed. And that's what Homes Now is about. We're not about solving mental health. We're not about solving the drug addiction. Homelessness is being without a home, period. You can add all the other stuff onto it, but in reality, homelessness is just being without a home. So what Homes Now wants to do, there is no hidden agenda. We want to house homeless people. We're doing it on Lumley now. We built two houses. Our third one will be delivered next week, and it will have a bathroom, a kitchen, and a stove, and a shower. And we want to come to Bellingham and build. But as it is now, we can't legally come to Bellingham. But we want to. So we just look at the city as, make a path for us. That's all we're asking. We're not asking for your money. We're asking you, make a path so we can start building here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Amy Glasser is next, followed by, yeah, followed by Doug Gustafson, and then Edredine Hovde.
Amy Glasser, I was outside with homeless, with people who were homeless just before this meeting, and two people who were homeless talked to us about how they just got $150 tickets for sitting downtown. $150 tickets to two homeless people for sitting downtown. We know what that means. That means if they're around town and they don't pay that $150 ticket, of which most homeless people don't have that kind of money, they'll be picked up because they'll have a warrant on them for not paying that ticket for $150. By that point, I bet the $150 ticket will be $300 or $500, just like the gentleman whose car was $350 and is now $1,500. So when the council says, we don't put people in jail for being poor, we do put people in jail for being poor because there are warrants on them. Maybe not the initial ticket, but if they can't afford to pay it and they get picked up again, then they're in jail. So we do put people in jail for being poor. We have to start doing something. We can start doing it now. We spent $300,000 cleaning up the woods. We could turn around, and the gentleman who lost his car because he was in jail for four days, someone in the city, and I know this can happen, I don't mean one of you is going to do it, can go to the court and say, okay, give this man five hours of community service and give him his damn van back. Why are we not making things simple for people? We are individuals. This is not Seattle. It's not a big city. We can go one by one and tick off the people who are homeless and deal with their issues directly, and just deal with them. We can get that guy in his home for $350 bucks. We can get another person probably in a tiny home if we just use that property at, was it 2,600 or 3,600 James Street? That was a vacant piece of property the city has. You're gonna enlarge James Street so the house got sold to somebody. Why isn't the city just giving that piece of property to Homes Now, Not Later, and saying, here, utilities are there. Use it. Make sure it's on wheels so that when we expand the road, we can move those homes. Let's just do it. We've been talking about it. We have committees. We're gonna have probably 10 more to figure out zoning. One by one, we can give exemptions. We can look at pilot projects. Everything these people talk about can be little projects to start with. Six tiny homes and a service building. The city spends so much on cleaning up the mess. Let's be proactive, please.
Thank you, Amy. Doug Gustafson is next, followed by Edredine Hovde, and then Jessica Johnson.
Hey, how's it going? So on our website, about a month ago, we put out a little poll. Do you think, and we asked the question, do you think Bellingham is doing a good job of solving the homeless issue overall? We put it in a number of places. We put it in Facebook, we put it in Nextdoor, which is like a social network that's only your neighbors. And so on Nextdoor, the poll got about, we got about 200 people on that one. 60% said that the city wasn't doing a good job. The next group, 16%, said it's not the city's job to work on this problem. Another 16% said it was mediocre. On our Facebook poll, it was even more exaggerated. We had 791 people fill it out. 74% said the city wasn't doing a good job. The next group said yes, but a lot more can be done. In any case, and also at the same time, we've been holding different events where we've gotten to know different homeless people, and basically hearing what they need. And basically, we find that they're all, each case is individual and different, like it's not the stereotypical, like, oh, yeah, you're a heavy drug user and you suddenly became homeless. It's actually a lot of, some people work totally full-time. The wage they make doesn't make enough to pay the bills they have to pay, so they end up homeless. We know people that work full-time, they end up homeless because of it, but they get paid minimum wage, so it's not enough to cover the rent. In the short term, though, besides the tiny, we actually support detached or attached dwelling units. I live in the Puget neighborhood, right next to Lydia House. I guess that would be an example of an attached dwelling unit, attached to a battered women's shelter. They don't cause any problems. Everything's fine. I'm really glad that they can help more people. Detached isn't really allowed in single residential. I think it would do a lot to help because, you know, we can actually provide a deal for homeowners. We can say, hey, you know, if you let us put one of these in your yard, you don't even have to pay for it. You'll get a little bit of financial benefit from it, and it'll house somebody. In the meantime, even besides that full tiny home housing, like what Rain was saying, there's a couple of things that can be done in the short term that can actually alleviate the situation greatly, even for those who don't have homes and aren't gonna be getting them anytime soon. You could provide ongoing support in the form of counseling and case management for camps, provide dumpsters, cleaning supplies, honey buckets, instead of displacing communities. Most importantly, offer housing instead of shelter. Many people who are living outside are because most shelters fall short of fulfilling individual needs such as remaining partners, storage, 24/7 access, and being forgiving for barriers. Tents are more like homes than shelters sometimes. Shelters feel like prisons sometimes because many people are trapped there for years before housing is made available. People in crisis have found, and formed friendships and communities, and that safety and comfort in. There's a lot that can be done to alleviate the situation. And it's not rocket science. I mean, this is like food, water, shelter. I mean, these are the basics of life. And so if we don't have that, what do we have, right?
Thank you very much. Edredine Hovde, followed by Jessica Johnson, and then, I'll come back to that name.
Hello, my name is Edredine Hovde, and I'm vice president of the Daughters of the Pioneers Watcom Chapter V. It seems like the signage is a tempest in a teapot. I'm not sure it can follow all of the homeless bravado, but as a member of the Questers International, Daughters of the Pioneers of Washington, friends of Gettysburg, and on the board of the Watcom County Historical Society, I remain committed to preservation, not changing or erasing our local, state, and national history. I was responsible for the sign at the Pickett Bridge. There was no signage there. The mission of the Daughters of the Pioneers, one of the missions is to make known historic spots. One of the most significant historic spots is right here in Bellingham, the Pickett House. Pickett was there a short time, but he's known for that house, and that house is supposed to be the oldest wooden structure on its original site in the state of Washington, one and a half blocks away from the oldest brick building in the state of Washington. Our history needs to be known, and by getting it known with signage, then we then have the opportunity to educate our citizenry. When I made the notation that there was no sign there, I thought that would be a perfect place to make some sort of advertisement for the Pickett House, because a lot of people didn't know about it. So I went to the DAR, and they have the plaque in the bridge, but they were unaware of it because that had been put in 1920. And so they, the Regent and I, worked with the city, and it took us four months, but then the city had the sign people come, and they built the sign, and they installed it for the bridge. Now, regarding history being complicated, and I think it often is, however, as the case of the bridge name, it doesn't need to be made that complicated. In 1856, a captain in the United States Army was sent to Watcom, Washington Territory, to build a fort and a military road from the fort to the town. A bridge needed to span Watcom Creek as part of the assignment. Naming the bridge for the man who was in charge of building the bridge isn't political, it isn't complicated, and it isn't making a statement about anything. It is identifying a geographical place. Leah Jackson Edson took a photograph of the bridge, and on the back, it is written, Old Pickett Bridge, November 1900. So the name Pickett Bridge has been used at least 117 years. April 16, 1918, the Bellingham City Council officially named the bridge Pickett. The bridge is one small part of the military road that connected Fort Bellingham with Fort Stillicum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jessica Johnson is next, followed by Alian Ludkey. I can't read the handwriting, unfortunately. So is Jessica here? Jessica Johnson? Okay, we'll go on then to Aliten Ludkey. Sorry, the handwriting looks pretty good, but. Alian Ashley Ludkey? Okay, I will go on again. Nissa Armstrong Pole.
Hello, my name is Nissa Armstrong Pole.
Hello, my name is Nissa Armstrong Pole. I am homeless. I have been for a couple of months now. I think you might be surprised to know that I actually have a two-year degree in civil engineering, and I'm actually very close to getting a bachelor's degree. But I'm also disabled, and so I'm on a limited income. My husband has been providing for us for a good number of years, probably close to 16 this year. And last year, he was hit by a drunk driver in the course of his job as a commercial truck driver. He has not been able to return to work, and that is what has precipitated us being homeless. I am a mother of seven children, five of which live with me. Two are disabled as well. They are older, and I'm joined by two of my daughters today. Very proud of them for wanting to be here with us. But I think that people today have an idea that homeless people mean... Think that homeless people mean that you're druggies, you're alcoholics, you're abusers, or you've been abused. That may be true of some people. But there are families out there with children like I have, families that have disabled members that can't work any longer. Financially, I'm kind of stuck. If I do work, I lose my disability, and if I don't work, I lose a home. Granted, it's on wheels at the moment because that's what we can afford, but that's what we have. If we go to HUD or the county and ask for help to get into housing, it does a disservice to my husband who served in the military for 16 years and was operational twice, both in Somali and East Timor. He's a decorated serviceman and a very good provider. I love him very much. And it makes me very sad that he would have to live really, really close to people that make him more anxious and make his problems even worse. At least where we're at right now, we can kind of control the circumstances where his disability is punishable at the moment, and we can all stay as a family. And we're very worried that if we were to go to the county or someone else, that we would be split up into two or three different homes, and we just don't want that. We want to stay together, so that's what we've done. We've been very blessed to have someone come forward and help us out and help us get into a place where we can feel comfortable and safe. But my reason for coming today is to help support homes now, not later. I think that the tiny house movement needs to be made available to people like us, people that want a more sustainable living condition than the model that has been put out to us for the last couple hundred years of a traditional home. And I think if we can make the zoning and the codes available and allow people like Jim to come and build homes for people that need it, that don't have income themselves, that would really be helpful to the whole community, not just, not just the homeless people, but for everybody. Give them something that they can feel involved with. Give them a sense of community. Give them something to work towards. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Nathan Sims? Hope I didn't butcher your name too much.
You pronounced it right.
Cool.
I'm Nathan Thomas Sims, son of James Harold Sims of Norway and Betty Lou Hulair of the Lummi Nation. My great-grandfather was Joseph Hulair, who carved many of our treasured totem poles here in Watcom County. It's with that in mind that I approach you, not as officials, but as friends, neighbors, and I dare say, family. I grew up here. This is my home, and I always return here, no matter how far I travel. It's, breaks my heart to see the homeless situation here, and through my aunt's prodding, I joined Stepping Stones, which is headed up by Nick Lewis of the Lummi Nation, and we have two shelters open. As a disabled homeless person myself, I actually serve as a resident house manager at one of them. We have achieved something that we are very proud of, and our homes run like family households rather than homeless shelters. You can feel the distinct difference if you would come join us for a meal at our shelters, which I invite you to do so. We also work with Homes Now, and we're building tiny houses out at Lummi with the goal in mind, the vision and the knowledge, to build self-sufficient tiny house villages. And being self-sufficient is a great thing because you can put them anywhere. I'm not saying that we need to put these villages right in the middle of town. We have bus routes to go everywhere. We can put them right outside of town on a route. We can help everybody. If they're self-sufficient, they've got everything that they need, and that might help, you know, save the trouble of tripping over somebody on the sidewalk. But these houses, they provide everything that you need. The village, it could have a blacksmith shop, a woodwright shop, a greenhouse, everything that they need. If you provide these things for people, there's less chance of them, well, there's more chance of them, rather, being motivated to pick themselves up. And I see this as house manager, working at the shelter, that with that family atmosphere, with that motivation, with the many resources that we have here in Watcom County, everybody feels motivated. They get out there, they do their paperwork, they go to their appointments, they see their doctors, and they find the wherewithal and the resources to get in their own places. This is one of the few places where you want a high turnover rate, and we're seeing that. We want to set an example, and we'd like to help Watcom County, we'd like to help Homes Now, and we'd like to help as many homeless people as we can. Save them all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment period. We will now go on to reports from our standing committees. The first standing committee that we will report from is our planning committee, which... Excuse me? Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, go on. Any objection?
No, go ahead. Let her speak.
Please come forward. Just state your name, though, so we can have it in the record if it's not on the sheet.
It's S-H-O-V-I-A. S-H-O-V-I-A. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. My concern is diversity here in Bellingham. I came here, and I think this is a wonderful place. Of course, when I came here, being African-American, I did not have race first in mind. I had, I'm educated, I have three children, I have my degree, I did contract work, I've, you know, I shouldn't have any issues. And come to realize, through WorkSource Development, Workforce, and working through them, that we seem to have ageism as an issue with employment. I do have, I've gathered quite a bit of facts. I have limited time, and I do understand that, but if you go to the website, or you may be able to go to the Chamber of Commerce, where they have facts about unemployment between married, unmarried, blacks, Latinos, the elderly, there's a big crisis. And I think this crisis could be resolved by having a diversity director to oversee many of the companies here, to be considerate of, or being more educated. I don't think that people are purposely discriminating. I think that there's just a lack of education. You know how sometimes we are against, or do things and don't even realize what we're doing? And I think that this can also have a resolution overall. I know that we're speaking of homelessness, but as you know, goes hand in hand, getting a job is very important. I have even dwindled down to income not being an issue, just having a job to go to, to support my family. I don't want to be dependent on the system, but I think that me going to get my degree and doing all the things that I'm supposed to do, you know, never committing a crime, never doing drugs, anything like that, and applying myself and doing all the classes or anything else that I need to do to contribute to me getting a job, it's, it's a factor. It's a big factor, and I have surveyed and talked to many people, and in my class at WorkSource, we have a class of people, I myself, I'm 48 years old, so of course, if I walk in, you don't really know how old I am. But I'm thinking of people who do show that they're over the, over a certain age, between 45 and 50, have, or 60, and having a difficult time being in the job market, and considering that they have raised the age as far as getting your Social Security and stuff like that. And a lot of people just in general want to work, and I think that we all have to contribute or fit, or self-actualize. So it's important that we consider this, maybe creating a diversity director or a diversity team so that we can address some of these issues. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll go on now to a report. Sir, did you like to also do the public comment? This is kind of a regular city council. How do you... Yeah, go ahead. Last one. Okay.
My first time doing this. Aaron Thomas. I am, wanted, just want to thank each and every one of you for taking the time to listen from the Lummi Nation. We've always had homelessness in the last, I shouldn't say always, but recently, we've had homelessness at Lummi Nation. And we've seen so many of our people living right here on these streets, right here in Bellingham, and thankful for a small group of us decided to do something about it and have helped create a program called the Lummi Stepping Stones Program. And we're urging the city to be a big part of this work. I'm currently running for Lummi Nation Council, and I probably couldn't have said that, shouldn't have said that. I apologize. But I think it, you know, we're, we're both two communities living next to each other. And I've said on this floor several times that neither one of us is going anywhere. The Lummi people aren't going anywhere, neither the city. So why don't we work together? Why don't we try to do what we can, try to make it so that homelessness goes away here in Watcom County? Be the first city tribal nation in the country to work together. And we can do that. We have the power, we have the brain power, we have the resources to do and combine both of our sovereign entities to be able to do this. And so I just wanted to come here and support, ask for your support, to continue the efforts that we've been doing. We are continuously making changes in Lummi, and I want this to happen here in the city, not just for Lummi people, but for all people. All people deserve to have a place to live that's safe, that has a roof over their head, that they can feel warmth. How many of our homeless are children, who are the most innocent of all the people? And that's the, the main reason why I like to do the work we do, and we're volunteers. So I encourage everybody, not just the city, but all of us to join in, in whatever ways we can, whether it's just to give a dollar, a dollar or an hour of your time. So, my dear people, I just want to thank you for this time. We have an opportunity that I think we can't let pass by. Hi, Chaka.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, now we will go on to the committee reports, and the planning committee, quite appropriately, has been having meetings on housing and housing affordability issues, so I'll let the planning committee chair, Gene Knutson, talk about that. Gene?
Thank you, Michael. We had one item on our agenda today. It was manufacturing housing conversation and a brief history of zoning. This is the, this was the third work session on affordable housing in the planning committee and has two parts. The first part is a brief presentation by the planning committee development director on the evolution of zoning in Bellingham and how it has evolved over time to meet the changing needs and interests in our community. The second part is a conversation on the non-subsidized affordable housing offered by mobile home parks here in Bellingham. The committee has invited a national expert on the topic. Her name is Ishbel Dickens. She has assisted homeowners associations in purchasing their communities as resident-owned cooperatives, and she is involved in policy changes at the local, state, and federal levels to preserve, protect manufacturing homeowners' rights and housing choice. This morning, we heard from both of these people. Rick Sepler gave us a zoning history of Bellingham, and Ishbel Dickens talked about manufactured homes and mobile home parks. And we are going to continue this discussion at our next committee meeting, talking about one of the concerns we have. We have 10 mobile home parks or 10 manufacturing parks in the city of Bellingham. And when one of them gets bought, purchased, or closed down, all sorts of people are out of a home. And when you look at Lakeway Mobile Estates, where there's a lot of mobile homes in there, if that was to change hands in the next few months, where would all those people go? So we're going to be looking at this again in two weeks, and hopefully, we can come up with some ideas to help these people because we had three or four of them today, and you could see the fear in their eyes that they, they could have the plug pulled out from under them at any time. So we'll be continuing this discussion, and we'll be talking about it in the next two weeks in the committee.
Thank you, Gene. The other, next committee that met today was the Justice Committee, which is chaired by Councilman April Barker, but Pinky Vargas also serves on that committee and was there and should be given the report.
Thank you, President. We had one, we had one item before us today. It was a briefing on the law enforcement process for Bellingham misdemeanants. Now, our Justice Committee is intended for us to learn more about our justice system and bring the public along with us. So we had a really fantastic presentation today from Officer Don Omer, who talked about the processes for our police department. Now, this was a 40-minute presentation, so I'm just going to give you a very little summary. I encourage anyone who is interested in this and coming along with us on this journey of discovering our justice system, to watch our videos from our committee meetings, and we are placing them in a criminal justice category so you can easily find them. Anyway, he talked about the primary objectives of patrol. The five are to protect and serve, crime prevention, to preserve the peace, to enforce laws, and to arrest, and talked about the complexity of their jobs and how the multi-facets of their interactions with the public can go in many directions, whether that be civil or we, if things end up in our misdemeanor courts or if they end up in our federal system. So just, just encouraging those to take a look at it and learn a little bit more about our justice system, but those were the main, main things about how our police department interacts with our public and the processes that they need to go through. End of committee.
Thank you very much. The next committee that met this afternoon is Public Works and Public Safety. That committee is chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornerman.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item before us today. That was a resolution for emergency deconstruction of homes at 2315 and 2512 Lynn Street. Two homes at 2315 and 2512 Lynn Street, owned by Stephen Baker, have been declared a public nuisance, and the judge was granted the order for deconstruction on July 28, 2017. An emergency declaration is necessary for prompt and timely action. The properties will remain in the ownership of Mr. Baker. The city has access for the demolition, but does not have the ability to provide access to private third-party contractors for inspection during a standard bidding process. In addition, time is of the essence in cleaning up the public health threat. Issuing and executing contracts under an emergency declaration will shorten the length of time required to complete the cleanup. The committee recommended approval of the resolution, and I saw...
Second. We have motion before us to declare an emergency to allow for the deconstruction of the public nuisance homes located at 2315 and 2512 Lynn Street. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. That passes six, sir, with one excused absence.
End of committee.
Okay, thank you very much. The next committee was, is, or was this morning, Lake Watcom Reservoir and Natural Resources Committee. Councilwoman Dan Hamels, the chair of that committee.
Thank you. We had two items before us, the staff, or this morning, I guess this afternoon, sorry, I've been here all day. The first was a Washington Conservation Corps end-of-year presentation. For the past 15 years, Bellingham citizens have benefited from the city's relationship with the Washington Conservation Corps. The Public Works Department currently sponsors two crews through a joint funding agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology and the Federal AmeriCorps Program. The crews have been crucial to the success of the city's habitat restoration efforts. This presentation was wide-ranging and provided by all of the members of the conservation crews. They did go over how the work that they do is framed by our legacies and strategic commitments. Just for a few samples, they do planting, watershed, invasive species removal, monitoring hydrology. The work that they do does, has substantial and direct impacts on our environment, our drinking water, our wildlife, and our salmon. They're just an outstanding group of people, and they do incredible work. That was the first item. Second item was related to Middle Fork Nuxack River Fish Passage. The city's diversion dam on the mid fork of the Nuxack River blocks fish passage to the upper watershed. Several initiatives to design and fund construction of a fish-passable facility have been unsuccessful. Recently, the Paul Allen Foundation granted funding to the American Rivers to work with the city towards removal of the fish passage barrier and construction of an alternative water... water supply intake structure. The city and its original project partners Lummi Nation and Nuxak Tribe and the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife will now work with the American Rivers, um, experienced dam removal staff to complete project design and seek the funding needed for construction. And so the timeline for that is 2018 design, 2019 permit, 2020, uh, implementation. And the funding, um, that we will be receiving from the Paul Allen Foundation is $2.98 million. End of committee report.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, the next committee was Parks and Recreation. That committee is also chaired by April Barker, and again, Pinky will be reporting for her because she is also on that committee.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item for us today. It was a community park at Cordada Master Plan Adoption. Uh, we know that many of our northern residents in the city have been waiting for this park for a very long time, and I'm very excited to say that, um, our committee unanimously recommended approval, um, for us to move forward on the park today. Uh, the park depart, the Parks Department, Nicole Oliver, presented some changes and adoptions from the feedback that we gave her from the original, uh, plan. Uh, they showed us what could work and what could change. A couple of things that we have been guaranteed in regards is the children will have a spray park in the north, um, and that we will use arts entrance way to make it more, um, conducive to people realizing this is a park and a place of entry, and to make sure that we're, um, providing safe, um, passage across the street for children and elders, et cetera. Uh, so all in all, we were very, um, excited by the, um, the plan. Um, it is online if anybody wants to look at those documents and see where, uh, where we're at and what we have, uh, proposed for the plan. And with that, I so move.
Second. We have a motion before us to approve the Cordada Community, the Community Park at Cordada. Is that really going to be the name? The Community Park at Cordada, the Master Plan. Is there any discussion on this issue? I would just make a note that the build-out may take many years. It's estimated at $13 million over several phases. Um, that money will come from dedicated greenways levy funds, which can only be spent on parks, and park impact fees, which again are to be spent on parks. All those in favor of adopting the master plan signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes six zero with one excused absence.
End of committee.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will now go on to the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole had three agenda items before us today. The first was a discussion on Pickett Bridge. The city council has received requests from some members of our community to remove the current signage and/or rename Pickett Bridge. On August 14th, at our previous meeting, the council voted to refer to the Committee of the Whole, which is what we did today, a discussion regarding tasking or giving the job to the Historic Preservation Commission to look into the issue with three points of guidance. One, engage the community to better understand their concerns on the naming issue, research the history of the bridge and its naming, and three, present their findings and recommendations to the mayor and the city council. This afternoon, the, uh, count, the Committee of the Whole did indeed recommend proceeding in that direction. Do we need to, uh, Peter, re- renew or make a motion tonight? Direction was given this afternoon?
Uh, it wouldn't hurt, but my understanding is the council already voted to do this? Is that correct?
Yeah, we did. Weeks ago.
Yeah, well.
Okay. We do it again?
Already given direction this afternoon. So I'll just report the fact that that's the direction that was given. Um, I would like to, to comment that we heard this evening from Wes and from Adrian Dean and from Gretchen. I think each time, we're learning a lot more on this. Um, it's, it's going to be, I hopefully, uh, I think, a really, um, healthy, uh, process in, uh, in the end. Mary Linville, Mary Kelly?
Um, and there was another comment that you know.
Turn your microphone on there, Chief. You'll learn it before you leave.
Yeah. It's only been seven years. There was another comment that was made that I actually had discussed with staff before, which is, um, the comment, I think it was Gretchen that made the comment about what is our criteria so that, that every time something comes up, we don't wonder what, what we should do. So, um, I, I like that idea. Let's focus on the Pickett Bridge first, but I think that it's, would be good to, um, identify other landmarks throughout our community and, um, also to come up with some criteria so if somebody else asks us to do something, that we have some objective criteria to look at. And also, I've directed Public Works to put the directional signs to the Picket House back up. So that will happen tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, the second item on the Committee of the Whole, excuse me. Hmm, I think I already skipped past it. Thank you. Um, is a review of options regarding possible rules to prohibit the feeding of wild animals in Bellingham. Uh, many wild animals have adapted to the urban environments and are experiencing steady increases in population. This results in animal deaths in traffic and destruction of gardens and increased human-animal conflicts. Research also indicates that the intentional feeding of wildlife worsens these problems and hastens the spread of disease in animal populations. Put simply, the research shows it's really not healthy for the animals, and it creates unhealthy problems for the rest of us, too. The city council received a number of complaints recently regarding the negative side effects of feeding deer. This afternoon, the comment is that we really are seeing an increase in deer population. And there's, um, I think there was a common sentiment that we don't want to, uh, add to that problem. Staff presented research on the impacts of feeding wild animals, and, uh, we had some sample ordinances to review. Um, this afternoon, we gave to, uh, we made a, provided a direction to the staff for the legal department and our policy staff to work together to draft a proposal, um, for an ordinance, uh, preventing the intentional feeding of wildlife. There was discussion about what we wanted to achieve. I think primarily, we wanted to simply put a, a law on the books. The idea was not to go out and do active enforcement, be able to point to something which right now we can't even point to. If our animal control officers or wildlife officials in the state run into a problem, they don't have a law on the books to point to, to tell people, let people know that that behavior, um, is not a good idea and is, would be prohibited. Um, that ordinance will come back some future date, and we'll consider whether or not to approve it at that time. The third item on our agenda was a resolution affirming Bellingham City Council's support for the Deferred Action for Childhood Rivals Immigrant Program, known as DACA. Uh, the United States President Donald Trump recently announced his plan to terminate the DACA program. And this action would affect 800,000 immigrant children in our country, approximately 17,000 of whom live in Washington State, and it would affect many students locally. In an action that will likely, uh, it is described as an action that will likely lead to harmful trauma, local hurt, and, and it would hurt local and national economies and create unrest here and throughout our county. Uh, a resolution was drafted for consideration, asking the Bellingham City Council to stand in solidarity to support DACA. Um, we had some options before us today. One was simply to discuss the, um, resolution, perhaps edit it. Uh, we could forward it on to committee for the discussion, but this afternoon, the, um, I believe the unanimous, uh, motion was simply to recommend approving the resolution as written. Uh, this was brought forward by Councilmember, uh, Murphy. Would you like to make a motion or make a statement?
Sure. But, you know, as we heard this news in our community, I envisioned so many Bellingham citizens feeling just as frustrated, concerned, and worried about how this would impact not only our local residents and our immigrant community, but also how it would rip families apart and have devastating effects on anybody that would be experiencing this horrible trauma. And so it's great to be at a point in my life where I can actually put pen to paper, quickly pull this resolution together that's before you as our community, and it's just an opportunity for us to tell you where our values are. In the resolution, we're asking the President and Congress to please uphold this. We stand in solidarity with DACA. I appreciate the city council being willing to push it to this, uh, push it forward at this time. And I encourage people, if you have any thoughts, if you have any considerations about DACA, please contact the President and contact your members of Congress. Heichka.
Want to make a motion?
Oh, sure. And I move that we pass the resolution affirming our solidarity with DACA.
Second. We have a motion and a second before us to approve the resolutions. Any further discussion of this resolution? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously, uh, six zero with one excused absence. Um, we had a couple of other items.
We have minutes.
First of all, we have minutes for approval. We have one set of, uh, meeting minutes from August 14th.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Are, is there any, um, changes or corrections to them? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Items for old or new business. Um, we had several, uh, smaller items and a few larger ones. Um, one item I brought forward is that the, uh, local transportation authority, WTA, every four years is required by law to review the composition of the board. The council appointed me to represent the city on that board. Um, several people, uh, April wasn't here, I'll speak for her. She, um, spoke with regard to the arch that was recently put in, uh, the ceremony, groundbreaking ceremony for, uh, Arch of Healing and Reconciliation, um, behind, uh, the Bellingham Library. The issue she brought forward was not only one, praising that event, but two, asked the administration about planning for other, um, changes in the area behind the library and a way to coordinate those efforts. She wanted to make sure that that was considered. Terry, you also had a matter you wanted to bring forward.
Yes. I brought, uh, an item, uh, forward earlier today, which we, uh, and that was a resolution celebrating September 21st as International Day of Peace and recognizing the 15th anniversary of the Watcom Peace and Justice Center. And it reads, "Whereas each September 21st, we absorb, we observe International Day of Peace around the world, and whereas in 1981 by unanimous, uh, the United States Nation, United Nations Resolution 3637, the UN General Assembly declared this as a day devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and people, and whereas the theme for the 2017 United Nations International Day of Peace observance is Together for Peace, Respect, Safety and Dignity for All. And whereas in 2010, a meroral proclamation was signed establishing September 21st as International Day of Peace in Bellingham as a day to imagine, build, cultivate, and celebrate peace, and whereas International Day of Peace has been commemorated in the city, uh, of Bellingham since 2003 with a community event organized by the Watcom Peace and Justice Center. And whereas in 2017, the Watcom Peace and Justice Center celebrates 15 years of peace and social justice activism and education throughout Watcom County. And whereas the community is invited to commemorate International Day of Peace with an event on Thursday, September 21st at the Majestic, uh, 2010, 27 North Forest Street. Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Bellingham that September 21st shall be celebrated as International Day of Peace in Bellingham. And be it further resolved that the city council recognizes the 15th anniversary of the Watcom Peace and Justice Center and expresses its appreciations for the, the center's important work of educating our community about peace and nonviolence. And I would, uh, request the council to pass this tonight.
Okay. We have a motion before us to pass a resolution as read into the record by Councilwoman Terry Bornham. Um, normally, we really prefer, we have a, a good procedure, I think, to introduce these things and then vote them at a, at a later meeting or at least publish them ahead of time. Unfortunately, the 21st occurs before our next meeting, so we really couldn't do this in time, um, this afternoon. There was no objection to, um, bring this forward this evening. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That also passes six zero with, um, one excused absence. And then Pinky, there was, uh, also, you were designated to a task force, do you want to report on that?
Uh, yes. Uh, last meeting, the, uh, mayor asked for a member to represent the city with the mayor on if the jail tax should pass. Um, we asked for an oversight committee, um, to review how, uh, our finances are being spent, um, on the jail. And so I, um, stepped up for that in continuity, um, because I worked on the actual financing for the, us to get to this point. Um, so I stepped up for that position.
Okay. Anything else under old and new business? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go on to an executive session report. Uh, this, um, afternoon, we had an executive session to discuss two legal matters. One was potential acquisition of real property. Staff provided us with information on potential acquisition of real property. It was for information discussion only. The city council took no action. The second item was a litigation matter, Swaddish versus City of Bellingham. Staff provide information on litigation matter, and there is a proposed action. If councilmembers are willing, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the following terms: dismissal of the lawsuit and resolution of all claims related thereto for the payment of $60,000 to the plaintiff.
Second. I mean, move approval, I'm sorry.
I think you moved it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I was right the first time.
He knew what he was doing.
Talked myself out of it.
We have a motion before us to authorize the mayor to enter into this settlement agreement in Swaddish versus the City of Bellingham, which is a court, I, case, I believe, in Watcom Superior Court. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six zero with one excused absence. Kelly, are you next?
I'm next.
Okay. Um, mayor's report.
Okay. Very brief. Um, these are all informational just for, for you. You don't have to take any action. Appointment of Brand Holma to the Bellingham Sister Cities Board, appointment of Terry Brant, and reappointment of Ben Malar to the, excuse me, Community Development Advisory Board, and reap, uh, reappointment of Peter Hurd to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And that's it.
Move approval.
Second.
Go on to consent agenda. We have a motion before us. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes six zero with one excused absence. Our last matter is final consideration of ordinances, and there's one to approve.
An ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending Bellingham Municipal Code 20.00.015, Barkley Neighborhood, Table of Zoning Regulations for Area 26 and 28, BMC 20.00.045, Cordada Neighborhood Table of Zoning Regulations for Areas 6, 7, 12, and 20, BMC 20.00.095, King Mountain Neighborhood Table of Zoning Regulations for Areas 2, 6, 7, and 12, and BMC 20.00.230, Watcom Falls Neighborhood Table of Zoning Regulations for Area 13, to provide an opportunity to establish a transition area between residential and non-residential single zones and minor code cleanup amendments.
Move third and final.
Second.
Motion before us to approve the third and final reading of the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Michael Liloquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
And April Barker is excused. Ordinance passes six zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any business for the city council? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned, and our next meeting, I believe, will be the 24th? 24th. Thank you very much.